Good afternoon. Welcome to the February 9th meeting of the City of Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome you. Thank you for attending our meeting. We have quite a large crowd today for the meeting. I'd commend you to read our instructions for the meeting, which are able to be found out on the front desk. If you'd like to speak to us today, we'd ask that you fill out one of our speaker forms. We do have some guidelines for those of you who are speaking to us today. One is that you keep your comments brief, direct, to the point. If somebody in front of you has, who's spoken before on the particular matter, has said the same thing you're going to say, we'd appreciate you not repeating that. And so that everybody that's here in attendance for a particular item can be heard, and we'll keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. I ask you to direct your comments to the chair or to the commission, not to the applicant or other protesters. Maintain some form of decorum and order. Turn off your cell phones, any other electronic devices that you have that may interrupt the meeting, and we'll try to get through this in a timely fashion. So, JJ? Minutes of the February 26th meeting, commissioners?
Second.
Motion is second to receive the minutes of the January 26th meeting. Cast your votes. Those are received.
We have five uncontested continuance requests. Item 16, PC 10-486, defer to March 9th. Item 17, PUD 1581, defer to August 24th. Item 18, PC 10-484 has been withdrawn. Item 19, PC 10-482 has been withdrawn. And item 20, C 6869, has also been withdrawn.
Is there anybody here to speak to us on any of the uncontested continuance requests? Commissioners?
No approval of the uncontested request.
Second.
Second motion. Motion is second to continue the uncontested requests as read. Cast your votes. Those items are continued.
Two new continuing requests. Item 10, SPUD 941 defer to March 9th. And item 15, SPUD 950 to February 23rd.
Anybody here to speak to us today on items 10 or 15? Commissioners?
I thought, were we going to add item 11 to that list?
Item 11? JJ, I think that was...
Are we going to take, do that in order?
We can... I am unclear on 11.
Okay.
I've had no... Yeah. Okay. So, we have a motion is second to continue items 10 and 15, is that correct? Cast your votes. Those items are continued. Ms. Worley? Item 15 has been continued, ma'am.
Yes, just walk around.
Okay. All right. Move to the public hearing portion of our docket this afternoon.
We have three items on consent docket. Item one is special, specific plan for PUD 1550 at 1029 Northeast 6th Street. Item two is an easement dedication for a public road lying west of Reno and south of Richland Road. And item three is an easement dedication for an alley at Northeast 7th and Stonewall.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent docket is read. Any comments on that?
Move to consent docket, second.
Motion is second to approve the consent docket is read. Cast your votes. Those items are approved.
The first item for public hearing is C 6868, final plan of Waterstone 1, located north of Western Avenue, excuse me, east of Western and north of 150th Street.
Mr. Ish, how are you doing today?
Fine. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ernie Ish representing the applicant. We agree with the technical evaluations and ask for your approval.
Commissioners, nobody signed up on this item.
Your turn. Go ahead.
Move approval, second motion.
Motion is second to approve item number four. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Item five, PUD 1632, application to rezone 7,000 Plaza Mail Boulevard to the PUD Plan Unit Development District.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Today, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application that may look familiar. We were here just 18 months ago on a almost identical application. The only thing that has changed is the size of the property that my client has now been able to acquire. So what we've done is we've mirrored the language found within SPUD 838 into this PUD, PUD 1632. Again, taking them word for word, the only thing changing is the size of our application now. It was a unanimous recommendation for approval by this commission 18 months ago, and ultimately a unanimous approval by the city council. Mr. Allen was not able to make it today. I did talk to Jim earlier today. He is supportive. He did give me permission to make that known to the commission. So with that, we do agree with the technical evaluations, and we would ask for your support. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, nobody signed up to speak to us on item number five?
I have a comment about the signage and the EMD. This is on an appearance corridor. It's right smack on, what is it, I-35, is that right? And you want a 20-foot sign that flashes.
Mr. Bright, I'm...
That's a little bit farther up than what we would like to see. Particularly, you're dealing with a school.
Correct. And I'm happy that you've brought that up, because what I've done is I've gone back to the minutes of the meeting that we shared just 18 short months ago, and what I found was that exact argument was made. And what we have here is a bit of a unique situation in that we're not really on an appearance corridor. We're all the way on the east side of this property. Our neighbor on the east is a set of railroad tracks. So when you have a site as large as this former mall was, there is some confusion that happens as travelers are trying to make their way through the property. As you're aware, schools often have many events, and having an EMD sign allows for the school to promote those events so that the traveling public, parents, teachers, grandparents know where they are. Again, this is kind of a strange property in the size, putting a school there, but because we're all the way on the east, far away from I-35, you'll never be able to see this from I-35, again, it's a similar argument I made at the time. At the time, in July of 2015, the staff report that was issued did not have language allowing the sign. I actually made a request from the podium to amend the application at that time to add a technical evaluation, and I'm going to read from the minutes from that July 9, 2015 hearing, which said, "A variance to technical evaluation two was requested permitting electronic message display signs at level three and allowing a 20-foot freestanding sign." And I am happy to note that it was recommended for approval and unanimously approved by yourself. In fact, you were, and I highlighted your name, because I thought it might come up.
You know, memories go dim when you reach a certain age. And when I looked at the map, the map actually is upside down, because here's the, here's the school.
Yes, sir.
And when I read a map, I think, north is this way, you know, I mean, in other words, I thought that road going there wasn't, I thought that was I-35. I didn't read it.
Sure.
So therefore, I withdraw...
And before you do that, can I ask, why are we maintaining I-2 development standards for the property? What's the...
Because the entire balance of this site and everywhere surrounding it is the same. So, long-term, if something were to happen, it would create an anomaly where you'd have this one random piece that was yanked out in the middle of it. Being that it's on the rail, we think I-2 was, is appropriate. Now, we do, through the technical evaluation number two, take away the special permit conditional uses, but it would create this very strange C surrounding I-2 and I-3.
I'm not crazy about that. I think if we're going to do something like this, and we're going to amend, you know, a PUD to permit a particular use, which clearly this school is, and I'm all in favor of that, that that's what it ought to be, and it ought to be that until it decides to be something else.
Well, here's a bit different, though. I mean, when, you know, we've, the commission's faced that for Mr. Gamble, where he had a PUD and he was wanting change. Well, there's a little different. You had a mix of uses, you're on arterial. Here, as far as the eye can see, it's all heavy, heavy industrial. And so it's not, there's no other scenario that this would be anything but this school or industrial. So all we've done is maintain what we have, i.e. the I-2, and add the school use.
Well, you said no other use. I mean, clearly, it has had a commercial use, so I, I'm not going to hold up this application over this point, but I had to ask.
Motion is second to approve item number five. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, something is kind of out of order. I got a text from the chairman, Mr. Yocel, requesting a continuance on item 11. How do we deal with that? He's, he...
Take it up.
Huh? Comes in, okay.
Item six is PUD 1630, application by Kilpatrick and Eastern LLC to rezone 2221, northeast
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Paul LaFever representing the applicant. With me today and representing the applicant are Kelly Lay, Sam Rainbolt, and John Kennedy. Eastern Ridge is a 110-acre office and commercial development with approximately a 30-acre green belt. The development is located south of the Kilpatrick Turnpike, east of Eastern, and north of northeast 122nd. Contingent upon the zoning approval, the sale of the northwest eight acres of the property has been negotiated with the Warren Theater Organization. The group intends to construct a multi-screen theater at this site. The theater at this location will be approximately a quarter of the size of the multi-screen theater in the city of Moore, west of I-35. The balance of the property will be platted and plotted with commercial and office parcels to be sold to end-users who will develop the sites. A declaration of covenants and conditions will provide for dues to maintain the green belt area and other common areas such as interior streets. An owners' association will be formed. Extensive discussions have occurred with interested neighbors to arrive at a list of commercial and office uses acceptable to them. We believe that we are in agreement with those neighbors as to the proposed terms of the zoning request. We are not aware of any protest with respect to this zoning application. We are in agreement with technical evaluations one and two, but we have a difference as to the signage regulations that we're requesting. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Commissioners?
I have a bunch. What is the delineation of tracks 2A and 2B?
There are two issues distinguishing those. At the request of neighbors, they didn't want a drive-through, a restaurant with drive-through availability on the track 2B, so we excluded that.
Yeah, my question actually is physically, what is the delineation?
Ah, I'm sorry. It's, it's the center line of the 125th Street that separates them. I'm sorry.
Okay, I see. Because that's not clear from the information that we have. All right.
Yeah, to Janice's point, so west is B, and which is B and which is A on that from the center line of 125th? Paul, thank you, Janice.
So north of the driveway or the...
North of the driveway is A, and south of the driveway is B.
Okay.
Okay. And what is the, what is the boundary of the right-of-way of Kilpatrick Turnpike here? Is it, is our property line the right-of-way of the, of the turnpike?
I think as drawn, that's the...
I guess what I'm trying to ask you really is, is there any developable property north of this property, between it and the turnpike right-of-way?
No.
No? Okay.
Am I not, well, there is a little piece that's owned R1 up there, but I believe, if I'm correct, it's also zoned by the Turnpike Authority, but I, but the little answer to your question is effectively no.
Okay. The issues that I had with this matter the last time it came before us, I still have. And that is, much as I commented on the last thing we were talking about, there is a provision for the development of the eight acres, did you say, for the theater?
Eight, yes.
And I, you know, I'm all in favor of that, think it's a great idea. But there are uses, including, you know, drinking establishment and so forth, that are permitted within that theater use, that are not identified, at least by my staff report, and so I guess I should ask, as being accessory to the theater. So if for some reason the theater does not get built, there are certain provisions that will still continue to adhere to that property, which I think we might find acceptable in the context of a theater and might not find acceptable in the absence of it.
The way the PUD, the design statement is drafted, is that it's certainly intended to be accessory to that defined use unit, which is the theater, motion to the theater.
Okay, so you would, you would be agreeable to...
Yes.
Okay. To that limitation, all right.
However, it would otherwise be zoned C2, and so, I mean, it's, it's anticipated that other...
C3, isn't it?
Excuse me, C3. Other restaurants will be located south of the theater.
So if the theater is not developed on the northern tract, then anything that is permitted on, now I want to be clear about this, the tract 2A...
Yes, ma'am.
Would be allowed on this eight acres as well?
Exactly.
That's kind of a lot of uses. I mean, I guess I'm not, you know, there aren't any of them that just jump out at me as being wholly inappropriate, other than the drinking establishment. I'm not sure I'm ready to write a check on that. But if it's accessory to the theater, I can live with that, so. I wanted to ask why the limitation of the uses between 2A and 2B is being done by covenant, and maybe I'm really more concerned about whether they are also specified by the PUD itself.
They, between A and B?
Mm-hmm.
There are specified terms within the design statement.
So it's not entirely left to private enforcement?
That aspect is not left.
Okay.
That's a misstatement, if that's been suggested.
Okay. And the other things with respect to the possibility that the property does not develop as a theater that are of concern to me are the giant sign that they're asking for, which we can talk about whether we think is appropriate to the theater or not, but certainly would not be, in my view, appropriate to anything but the theater. So are you willing to make that limitation accessory to theater use as well?
Oh, yeah.
Including the 110-foot power?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a statement in here that the parking is sort of deemed adequate, as it's shown.
Yes.
Do we know how far off we are there? Is, are we not meeting the city's standard in some ways, that what's having to be deemed?
No, that's, that's not my understanding at all. Simply, they, the theater developed this site plan with their footprint and their proposed parking spaces to occupy it, and so since they're asking for it in this fashion, that's the parking plan for the eight acres that we're proposing, but I'm not aware that it's sufficient in any way.
That we're not meeting code. Can you answer that for me, JJ? You don't know? Okay. The last thing I wanted to ask you was about the sidewalks, especially along the southern boundary. And how, you know, at one point, the green belt there along 122nd Street is pretty narrow, although my little map does not show me, at least in print that I can read, how narrow it is. Can you tell me, we're not, we're not requiring any screening between you and the residential development to the south, so?
No.
And how wide is it, north to south?
I need to look at my other site plans, but it's approximately 50 feet.
And on the other side?
It's a little bit narrower.
Looks more like 25 feet?
Um...
If, if they, if the west side is 50, I'm going by that. I mean, it's very narrow there.
Yes. The size of the developable lots are tight here, and that's the reason.
And so my question is, you know, do we know for a fact that the terrain will permit the sidewalks along the southern border, so that there's not going to be a question about that later? And if so, how much of the green belt will they eat up?
Actually, the green belts, to my knowledge, I mean, the sidewalks have not been engineered, so I do not have a response to your question, but it would be the, as outlined in the, in the staff report, the requirements as to widths, depending on whether it's right on the curb line or off, would be applicable.
I sit on the board of adjustment, you know, and we have people come to us all the time and ask for variances to sidewalk development, is one reason why I'm asking. The terrain, the topomet that we were provided, looks to me like it's pretty tight.
Well, and of course, as you go east, this terrain gets very low, so we evaluate it at the time of what, just as physically possible there.
I have some concern about that, I must say. I think that's it for me.
I'm just a little confused. Are you objecting to the sidewalks being built on 122nd, on the green belt?
No, but I'm curious about how much green belt will be left, since we're, since we're not requiring any kind of sight-proof screening between this property and the residential is zoned property to the south. I'm just curious about whether, you know, you would say, well, it doesn't matter, there's this green belt, it's got, you know, it's heavily treated, and that'll provide screening. But in this case, I just wonder whether there really is or will be once sidewalks are built.
Well, you figure a five-foot sidewalk, maybe on the curb, and then a 20-foot green belt behind it, if that's 25 feet.
Well, we don't know if it's 25.
Wait, wait, wait.
Well, it has some...
Isn't the residential property to the south across the street on 122nd? So I'm not clear where my concern comes from. I mean, I get it, but you've got green belt, sidewalk, street, backyard, residential. So I'm less concerned about that, given the fact that it's not butting hard up against it, I mean personally, because 122nd Street goes through there, so.
Yeah.
All along the south. So we're getting a sidewalk along a major arterial, and you're going to have all the property setbacks, et cetera, so I think effectively, you're, structure to structure, it's going to be pretty significant.
Well, I understand what you're saying. I couldn't tell from what I've been provided whether that green belt was five feet wide.
Yeah.
It appears to be 100 feet on the west and 50 feet on the east.
Oh, well, that's definitely sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Commissioners, nobody signed up. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess the last point I did want to make is, isn't it, isn't it the properties in 2B that limit their hours of operation to 10:00 PM, and...
That is correct.
Okay. So if the theater is not developed, the property on the northern corner will follow the guidelines of 2A?
That's correct.
So they will not be limited in that way? They will have the later hours of operation?
The 2A has their own hours of limitations of operation. I believe there's a difference on weekends with that respect.
And, and the permission, the ability to build something with a drive-through window also?
That's right.
Okay. Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about the, the size of the signage for this particular location?
Sure. First of all, with respect to each development parcel, what is being proposed is they would be able to have their own individual eight-foot monument sign, 100 square feet maximum. So each business here would have their monument sign. Now, in addition to that, what we would like are three larger signs. This is a 110-acre development. The movie theater has their own specifications that they've provided to us and are asking for. The office park here is set back considerably.
And so we're asking for a monument sign that's larger as the entryway of 125th, and that's proposed for here, all right? And that sign we're proposing to be a maximum out of...
20 feet tall, and we're going to have quite a number of offices back there, and so what we're contemplating is a sign maximum 30 feet wide that would probably allow, like on the first portion, the name of the office park, and then a directory on the, on the remaining part to, to just list those businesses that are located there. Similarly, we're proposing a somewhat smaller sign, 15 feet in height, 20 feet in width, to be located generally to be the development sign, commercial development. If there are like three or four commercial offices or commercial developments here, they would be allowed to have their individual eight-foot monument sign, proposing a development-wide sign of the 15 feet height. I think that's too much. How many total signs are you anticipating with eight-foot monument signs and 20-foot by 30-foot big monument signs, and 15 by 20-foot big monument signs? And then the theater goes up to, what, 50 feet?
The theater sign is 26 feet.
It's a, it's a flashing, I didn't, I didn't object to the theater sign. I mean, for some reason, I think, well, it's the Warren Theater, and there it is, and so you expect to be, see, that would be it. But my, my comment is, is that we're dealing with goat pasture. There's no signage competition anywhere, in any place that you're putting this, and you're, there's just no competition at all. What I would prefer to have seen... What I would prefer to have seen on this application would be a rendering of what these signs look like, that we've seen before. We have drawings of signs, and there's, you know, this is what it's going to be, and I'm assuming that there's going to be no EMD signs.
That's specified, yes.
I mean, everywhere.
That's right. It's specified in the design statement.
It just seems to me that you're kind of, you know, upping the ante on the size of the signs, and you may not really need that. I think there needs to be some sort of, of what, perhaps, design for the signage, and what are the examples?
Maybe I should, here's a suggestion on this, on the signs, just so I'm clear, right? So, I think we all agree that the 26-foot sign on the theater is not out of place.
Okay.
The eight-foot signs are not out of place. Okay? So, Paul, if I heard you right, you've asked for a 20 and 215s, or 20 and 115?
20 and 115.
So, additionally, there's two signs that may or may not be disputed, which amounted for 100, a development of 110 acres, admittedly, Bob, not disagreeing with your point about there's not much out there, that you're only asking for a total of two additional signs for the whole of the development. I mean, it doesn't seem untoward, at least to me, given, again, the size of the development, et cetera. The question I would say is, do you bring the 20 down to a 15? Or, which, if you've got that many locations that you're, for that large office space, 15 may kind of scrunch it up to where it's not useful, would be my only thought. So, I don't, I think, so far as signage, for this development, as comprehensive as the plan is, we've seen a lot worse. We've seen requests for several large signs, and it is, given the fact that there's not much out there, you're only getting two additional signs and some eight-foot monuments. Again, those, setting those aside, we're never going to object to one of those.
Let me inject something before you talk. On several occasions, we have allowed larger signs, and I had in mind developments that were really Chesapeake developments, and Rand Elliott was doing his work, and the signs were designed. They're, they're not monument signs, here it is, but there's a design element in the signs, to make it more palatable, in my opinion, rather than, here's your block of bricks, and here's this stuff, and, and it just looks like a block of bricks. If there could be a design, I would, I would, 15 and 10? Would you go down five feet? Yeah, they're wide. You've got, you know, these are wide signs. I asked my client to come forward.
Hi, I'm John Kennedy, 1901 Bedford. Since I'm here, can I make a couple other comments and respond to Mr. Bright's? I'd just like to say that Kelly, Kelly Lay and I have, we made our first offer on this property 10 years ago, so we have studied it extensively, and we're kind of in love with this piece of property. It's one of the most beautiful pieces of property in Oklahoma City, and I would encourage everyone to go take a look at it. It is so beautiful that we set aside 30 acres for a park-like, park-like area that preserves the topography and the vegetation. And the planning staff wrote something in their report that really spoke to us, and that was that they wanted the trees to be planted in the developed areas clustered like the park that we are keeping. So, we thought that was, that was really great, and we've really enjoyed working with the staff. And the neighborhood, Mrs. Cook, Mary Ann Cook, that lives right across the street, she was here two weeks ago, but I don't believe...
Where are you?
Oh, where are you?
Right here.
Hello, all the way back. Mrs. Cook has a couple of sons. One of them's a great young lawyer, whom we worked with, and we worked out these details and the questions that you were asking, Mrs. Powers. So, it's been a process, it's been very collaborative with the neighborhood, and I think it's worked well, and with the staff. And to Mr. Bright's request, absolutely yes. So, we would agree to what he's asked for.
Okay.
Let me make one quick comment about your development. I think it's great. I think it's a great design, preserving the green belts all the way around it, how the interior's done, how the circulation's done, and then the theater over there, you know, it's going to be a popular place. I think you've done a magnificent job, and I thank you for the, just, I always look for a reduction in the amount of stuff that you'd have to look up that far. Given, look at that theater, it's going to be a great big thing, but then the rest of it, you've got a beautiful development, and so, thank you for agreeing to that, and I'm moved to approve this application with that, except for Janice.
I just want to add an initial favor. And our staff report tells us that the management plan, the management track is determined by a flat stage, but then it also tells us that there is no final flat, we're calling it flat wire, and it's affected tracks one and two. So, I just want to be clear about this, you're not going to flat tracks one and two, but there is a specific plan requirement, et cetera, for the plans to be flat.
I fully expect tracks one and two to be included within a plat when it comes.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that the Warren Theater folks understand and agree that they'll work with us to include that. The issue here simply is they're very anxious to move forward very quickly, and are moving faster than we're able with the balance of the, of the property to formulate designs like that, so...
But we will see a specific plan with respect to that.
That's, that is what's required.
Okay.
Yes.
The rest of my sentence was approval of the application.
Before I second the motion of approval of the application, Commissioner Bright, I want to take objection to my backyard being a goat pasture, but...
I agree with that.
But it is one of the beautiful properties in the city. It just happens to be in my backyard. With that being said, agreement to technical evaluations one and two, and the agreement of the signage reduction, I second the motion.
So, just to be clear on the signs, so the northernmost sign will be 15, the southernmost sign will be 10?
In tracks 2A and 2B.
Thank you. So, that way, we're clear on exactly which signs of which. Okay. Any other comments, Commissioners? Then motion is second to approve item number six as modifying TE number three with respect to signage. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Item seven, SPD 951, application by Swab Meat Company, through Zone 1132, Northwest 7th Street.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, on behalf of the applicant. What you have for you today is a spud to allow Swab Meat, who is currently the south of this property, also owns this property, to allow them to expand. They're currently in need of more warehouse, due to the fact that they can't store enough to keep up their production. So, we agree with the TEs. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, nobody signed up. Bob, you got anything?
I have a question on the staff report on operational impact, page 10. The spud includes some uses that could have negative impacts, noise, odor, light intrusion to nearby residential, including outdoor operation, outdoor equipment, vehicle storage, and above-ground flammable liquid storage, which should meet conditions required by the code. Will you meet those conditions?
All productions, all productions in the existing building, all processing's currently in the existing building, there's no intent to move production into the new building.
But, well, then, would you, you said you agreed to the TEs, that's the above-ground flammable liquid storage, but would you also add noise, odor, light intrusion, outdoor equipment and vehicle storage that will meet the code?
Well, it's a warehouse, so there will be vehicles there, and I can't...
I'm just, I'm reading what the staff report said. I mean, it just, they're, they're warning us that this may be, you know, something that would be offensive to neighbors that are around the area, and if, in fact, everything is done in the existing plant...
Yeah, noise, odor, and light intrusion, and I wouldn't imagine that there would be any odor. There's no, I mean, I can't, I don't know if there's currently any odor that comes out of that.
But my, my point is, is that this is, you're going to I-2 on this piece of property. I-2 allows a bazillion things that are potentially offensive to residential neighbors, and all I'm asking is, if in fact, what you're saying, all the bad stuff happens in the piece to the south, and nothing bad's going to happen there, is to add to the TE, in addition to above-ground flammable liquid storage, add to the TV, you know, noise, odor, light intrusion, that will meet the requirements of the code?
Okay.
Okay? That's, I mean, that's, that's all I needed.
I actually had a little bit even more of a point about this. I wanted to make sure that by agreeing to the technical evaluation, you are saying that if, if there is an above-ground flammable liquid storage on this site, it shall meet, which is what the TE says, the conditions of the code, and not that you'll go seek a variance from them.
I agree.
Okay. The only other question I had, I assume you're not going to have any signage on this, it'll be, other than what might be on the building itself? I mean, there's not really room in there.
There's no intent for signage now. They, we only allowed for a monument sign anyway, if there is any signage.
And is there any place to put a monument sign?
It would only be, if, if that was the case, it would have to be on Western, but there's no intent for signage at this point.
Okay.
Nobody signed up, Commissioners?
Move for adoption?
Second, with the addition to the TE of the other end, odor, lighting, and what the...
Noise, odor, light intrusion shall meet the requirements of the code.
Agreeable.
Okay. Motion is second to approve item number seven as conditioned. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is approved.
Item eight, SPD 942, application by Jeff Struble, through Zone 1639, Northwest 15th Street.
Hello, my name is Jeff Struble, live at 1916 Northwest 18th Street. Been working on this spud for the last, good part of last year. We've kind of sent packets out to all of the neighbors that touched the property and worked with them on changing things in the spud to meet their concerns. We've met with the plaza board, the Gatewood Neighborhood Association, and we met with Class and Ten Pin Neighborhood Association several times, and changed some different verbiage in the spud to meet all their comments. And then last month, we went in front of Urban Design, and staff had a few more tweaks to our spud, and we changed those to make, make them happy with everything we're doing, and I'm here to answer any questions or any concerns.
I have some questions about this application. One of them, I'll start off with, is the permeable parking. And this is an, an issue that's come before us a number of times. We've turned down a number of permeable parking requests, permeable pavement parking requests on much less dense developments than this, even in this area. And I think, you know, if we're going to permit that, we need some standards, we need to know what we're doing. We haven't had any kind of, you know, educational process for us in terms of the development of a standard for that parking. I have no idea how well crushed granite will hold up under this kind of use, and in the Oklahoma weather, so I, I can't consent to that on a use like this, I don't think.
Well, my... Sorry.
Did you want to speak?
Well, my office is across the street, and we've got that material approved two years ago, and we've had really good luck with it. I think the secret with that is using a coarser top coat of granite, where it doesn't turn into like mud. And of course, on this project, we're looking at the pathways, the roads will be cement, and just the parking stalls will be the crushed granite. So, you know, so that'd be a little ways for any of that to get into the street with all of the cement on all the pathways. So, we have put a lot of thought into this, and we've seen a lot of other areas where it has been an issue, and we, that's something we do not want, and we've been really, had good luck with it across the street from this project for the last two years.
You know, I'd love to see you work with staff to help us develop those regulations. We're all in favor of permeable paving, I think, but we don't know enough about it to say, you know, yes, this kind is okay, this kind is not, or whether, in this particular application, you know, at this type of a development, whether this will work here or work there. And I want us to get there, and I want us to get there sooner rather than later. But I, I'm, what I'm not comfortable with is telling some people they can, and some people they can't, just based on how we feel today. So, I think, given that we have, you know, denied a request in this immediate area fairly recently, I, I just couldn't be comfortable supporting it here. The other thing I have to say about this, you know, I, I really appreciate the contribution that you've made to this area, and, and I have to agree that, you know, what you've done looks good to me, and it seems to be working well, but the issues with respect to traffic in this area are just nightmarish. 15th Street is a neighborhood street, there are single-story residential units on the south side of it that face 15th. I don't think that I can support three stories here, partly because I think it will just absolutely loom over those properties to the east and south. It's a little less clear about how it would impact the catty corner to the southwest, but it also is too much of a variation for me to the setback. You still have one neighbor directly to your east on 15th Street, and three stories, it would be like, you know, living next to a grain silo. I, I think it's too dense for the, for the size of the space it's in, and I don't think I'm going to be able to support it, even though I like the idea of it very much. I'm not crazy about the commercial uses on 15th Street either, so, even on that first floor, and so...
And that is, and that is why we put the building on the, on Blackwell and 16th, so there's several parking spaces. We have, you know, probably, you know, almost 100 feet in between the residential and the commercial three-story, so there would, and we did that because, so that it wouldn't be looking down into backyards or, you know, windows and stuff, so that's why we placed it far away from the residential is, that we could.
And I appreciate that, it's just that you just don't have that much room to work with there.
And we're adding almost 90 parking spaces, which is way over the, the need for the amount of condos and small commercial spaces we are looking at putting in, which we're kind of, the, the commercial spaces are going to be like 1,100 square feet, so we're looking at more like office, like work, live-work spaces, or art studios, or, you know, smaller, not big commercial endeavors there.
I mean, Janice, let me inject what you were talking about, about the parking, in areas that are being, you know, inner-city gentrified, and you, you live just to the east of a major one, Western, and all the trouble with parking in those facilities, and we've talked about this over and over and over, and I encourage whomever is smarter than I am to come and... to come up with some sort of idea about what we can do. But, but in, in other cities that have had inner-city gentrified areas, commercial, popular restaurants, bars, housing, dense housing, the places that I've been, they park on a street. And they, they park wherever they can. And I don't, I'm not sure that there's an answer. And if the answer is, with your square footage, you've got to have X number of parking places, and that's the law no matter what, then I think of what, you know, I'm, I'm, that's not, that's not the ordinance that I'd like to see. So I'd like to see someone smarter than I am put something together that would say that within this part, you can have X number of parking places, and then there's, there's some sort of qualification. I mean, but, but be that as it may. You've designed this project, and I have to say that I also agree with you about the height. You know, I was, the three stories and the density. But, but I'm, I'm convinced by the letter from Ms. Thompson, the president of Class and Ten Neighborhood Association, that is a, an association that looks out for their area. And they've been, they've been very, very good. And then the other thing that I'm really encouraged about is the amount of time that you have spent with the neighbors in going over and over and over this and changing that and changing that. So even though, even though there may be some issues about parking and the height and density, I think that you've overcome that to the satisfaction of, of the Neighborhood Association. And so with that, I move approval of the application.
Nobody signed up, so cast your votes. You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item nine is PUD 1626, application by Oakdale Baptist Church, Theresaon 6400, East Hefner Road.
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the app. What you have before you today is a PUD for approximately 9.3 acre tract that is, that lies within a larger PUD, PUD 690. PUD 690 is approximately 156 acres of a PUD. So inside of the PUD 690 is a parking district, which lies, majority, majority of it lies over that tract that we are asking for the new PUD on. The existing PUD allows for a church in this tract within that parking district. It allows for two, it allows for 40,000 square-foot church in two separate buildings. But it has a lot of requirements of how the church would have to face, or any other buildings within that. You can see the parking district line, I believe, on your screen right now, and how it, it's on the east side of that site. So the parcel goes around the, along Valley Forest and Hefner there. But anyway, it, it requires that buildings face away from Hefner, and it also requires no access onto Hefner, and because all the access points are taken up within the PUD. The new PUD comes in and has been modified to allow the church to face towards Hefner and the access points onto Hefner. When this property was purchased by the church approximately six years ago, they obtained, at the time of purchase, access, two access points, which was filed of record onto Valley Forest. In this PUD, the church has agreed to only allow access on one of those points. So they, they've given up that one point that they agreed when they purchased the property. The church has met with the adjacent Neighborhood Association multiple times. I've been involved in three of those meetings. I think approximately eight of those meetings have been had between certain members and the board. Even, the latest one was just a few nights ago, and there was, I believe, 120 people there. Obviously, all the concerns of the neighbors have not completely been worked out. But the church has gone through great extents to work with the neighborhood and address, what I feel, majority of their concerns. The, this started out as a PUD, that the, the PUD was very simple, only allowed for three uses, the church and two other supporting uses. One of the requests of the Neighborhood Association was that they, they told us, if it didn't develop as a church, they wanted it to remain as the existing PUD. Well, that PUD has lots of uses in it. It has a village concept that's, you know, it was written back in 1999 when they, you know, they had an idea, there's not enough residents around there to support a village concept. So here's the church's proposal to what they believe to enhance the development for the development of the church in this neighborhood. So we do agree to the T, to the TEs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I can go in and address more of the concerns of the neighbors and how we address them, if you want. But I'll leave that up to you. I don't want to extend this out too far.
Just so I'm clear, Mark, before you step aside, when the original PUD that you filed, that the church filed, excuse me, you, you wanted three uses only?
Yes, sir.
And those uses, in the list of uses that I have on my staff, which uses were those?
The original uses, let me pull this...
That the church originally requested?
Right. We had low-impact institutional, community recreation restricted, and then eating establishments, sit-down, alcohol not permitted. Those three.
So you had the one, that, that would be numbers three, four, and 10 in the staff report, right? And your eating establishments, sit-down, alcohol not permitted were accessory to the church use, right?
Yes.
In other words, a coffee shop inside the church?
Yes.
And those were the only three uses that the church wanted? And still wants? Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say. We only went back and revised that at the request of the neighborhood.
So the uses that are set out here are those that, from the, the existing PUD?
Correct, verbatim, verbatim.
All right. And that includes all the specific uses that are prohibited, accessory dwellings, et cetera, right?
Yes. I mean, that site allows 2,000 square-foot lots of zero setback. I mean, and, and the church didn't want that. They, they chose to do it away with everything. Alls they want to do is put their church there. They've been on the corner for 97 years. That church building's been there for 97 years. Has 250 residents, or 250 attendees now. And the, the, the new church will have 450 seats in it.
All right.
They obviously won't fill it up day one, so...
Hopefully, we'll get some growth out there. Part of the ministry. Okay? Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mark?
Protesters?
Oh, yeah.
I wish I could tell you no, Bob.
Oh, yeah. We have a few.
Yeah. We, we, I would like to hear from the protestors. And Mark, we may have some additional questions.
And the, the pastors here, if you would like to hear from him of, of, you know, their history there and how they've served that community as well, so...
Thank you. If you're, this may take a while, so if you like, if you're not, if you've already spoken or your application's over, unless you're interested in the governance of the Plating Commission, or it might be a good time to depart. However, Ms. Burgess, would you come up, please?
I, I...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can you also remind them about, you know, if points have been made, you know?
Yeah.
Not to repeat those points. I know there's a lot of protest, and I've, I was, the first time that I've not been able to return every phone call and every email since I've been a commissioner. And so I know there's much interest.
If we could, again, as, as we said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, please keep your comments brief, direct, and to the point. And again, if somebody's brought up your point or if somebody has previously spoken to all of your points, perhaps you could defer or interject only your new information. That would be greatly appreciated, again, because we have a, a large group of folks here today. Okay, thank you, Ms. Burgess. Mr. Gandy, Dean Gandy, could you come up, please?
Mr. Chairman, my name's Dean Gandy. It's 6405 Northeast 105th Street. I appreciate your service to the city, and I know it's challenging at times. I'm not going to speak for the, for the entire neighborhood. I know others will speak. I would just say that I'm not opposed to a church in the neighborhood. We were actually excited six years ago when the developer talked about this opportunity. We thought it would be a nice community church and, and actually complement the neighborhood. So we thought it would be a nice addition, and actually, we're very supportive and didn't object at the time. It's obviously grown to be something much greater than that. So I live directly right across in that fourth house, looking directly across the pond into it. And, and obviously, it's going to have a tremendous impact in what we bought that house for and what we were enjoying the use of it in our retirement years. So again, it's not to be against the church, to oppose the church. I think, I think, again, it could be a great compliment in addition to the neighborhood. And we look forward to what we thought we were going to have. And unfortunately, that's, it's just grown to be greater than that. And therefore, I personally would oppose it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little confused. You say you're not opposed to the development of the church?
No, ma'am.
But it's grown to be greater than that in what sense?
It's just the size alone. You've heard what, the church on the corner is a lovely church, where it is today. And that's what, you know, in my impression, that's what I thought they were going to do. They were just going to move down the street, get into a newer facility. But it seems, it appears to me, it's just grown... I mean, why are we here today? It's, it's been approved for the purposes of it. So what, what is the request today? It's to go beyond what I think the original intend. Is that not correct?
Well, I, I believe that the, that there was the ability to put a church on the property. I think it's a difference between two buildings and one building. If I'm stating that, my recollection of how the PUD, the previous PUD, was set out. I don't know that there's an increase in the size of the church that's being asked for more in the number of structures. But correct me, Mark, if I'm incorrect. Please clarify that for me.
And also with respect to the orientation toward Hefner, away from Hefner?
This might be a good point for us to get clear.
Is there something else about this I'm not understanding?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
If you could, Mark.
Okay. Currently allows for, the existing PUD currently allows for 40,000 feet in two different structures. The existing, or the proposed PUD does allow for 50,000 square feet. The only, the, the, right now, it's designed at approximately 33,000 feet, but they wanted to allow for expansion if need be. And then the other point I would clarify is that it's currently required, a church is currently required to face away from Hefner. It's required to have 133-foot setback off of Hefner. So what that does, and it's only permitted in the parking district, which is a little bit west of that Valley Forest Road, okay? So with that, if you lay in two 40,000-square-foot buildings, then you're not going to put parking behind the back of the building, so you have to put the parking in front of the building. Does that make sense, right? So what that does is puts a parking lot down by the pond. What we've also offered up in our PUD is the green belts to maintain, which is not in the existing PUD along the, the pond. So we have offered that as well. So...
All right. Thank you.
Does that, does that answer your question?
The size, the size of that green belt on, on the pond is, is what distance?
Um, let me... Okay. So right along this portion, we have, right here, where there's the least amount of existing trees, is 30 feet. We have 50 feet here, and we have 125 feet over here. Where the, where the denser portions of the trees exist today, we've made them wider. So 30, 50, 125. And we've also offered up a green belt along Valley Forest in addition to outside of the right-of-way. They have trees that the, that the HOA has planted within Valley Forest right-of-way. So that 20 feet is then outside of the right-of-way in addition to that that we've offered up as well. Does that address your...
Ms. Lindsay, would you like to speak to us?
Before, I'm sorry, before you sit down, Mark, what you just held up is this? Is this, is this what you just held up?
Yes, sir.
And so those look like a lot of rooftops to me. Is it, or is it just the contour of a single structure?
It was just the undulation of a single structure.
Okay.
Just the, this, and this is a, a concept rendering, but you can see the different roof lines to give it more architectural character there.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay, would you like to speak to us? Sure. Give it to Commissioner Powers.
Thank you.
Would you state your name and your address, please, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name's Diane Alenzian. My address is 10400 Pond Meadow Drive in Oakdale Meadows. And that is a neighborhood that borders the church land on the east side. Some of my neighbors and our HOA board have also been approached to oppose the PUD, but have declined to do so in favor of continuing to work directly with the church. And I, and I have remarks today about the history and the role of the church in the community. But before that, I wanted to say that I do understand and feel for those in Oakdale Valley who, when they bought their home, were told something different about the development of that land. When I bought my lot 14 years ago, Oakdale Valley was a green belt, and my neighborhood covenants detailed a village plan that gave us access to their lake through wooded walking trails between the two neighborhoods. But the developer sold the land, and as countless homes were built, the landscape changed, and we lost access to the lake. So I do understand that disappointment when the development plans change. I've heard and read multiple objections to the PUD, which appear to have no real consensus except to oppose the plan. And I do believe the church leaders have diligently sought compromise with the neighbors, many of whom I consider friends. When I ask those friends, what is the major concern? They simply fear that the church will be an eyesore in the community. But Oakdale Baptist has been in the neighborhood for almost 100 years. It currently sits on the northwest corner where Oakdale Valley has kind of grown around us. They just seek to build a newer and nicer building, not an eyesore, on a larger piece of land on the northeast corner, just outside of the same neighborhood where they currently are. The church has been serving the community over the years and has demonstrated a long-term and high level of engagement with the neighbors. In addition to worship and Bible study, they host community events like a fall festival and Easter egg hunt, children and youth programs in camps. Volunteers serve Oakdale Schools Thanksgiving dinner and Tudor Crutchers students. We have a community food pantry and fitness classes, and the community uses our facilities basically whenever they request. People who attend Oakdale Baptist and these community events are from all religious and nonreligious backgrounds and all walks of life, and all are welcome in our church. A concern has been expressed that our beliefs would be imposed on residents of Oakdale Valley. And while we do hold firmly to our beliefs, we strive to live them out through service and genuine love for the community. We don't expect others to share our beliefs as a prerequisite to experiencing the benefits of our ministries. of our ministries. And I understand that you, as a planning commission, seek what's best for the public interests. So I did a little internet search, and I looked up what value does a church have in the community? And overwhelmingly, studies show tangible benefits in addition to quality of life, but studies show communities with a strong church presence have increased property values, positive economic impact, lower crime rates, and improved quality of life. I respectfully ask that you consider and approve the PUD application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. R.C.'s. Did I say that properly? Joe?
Yeah, Joe Arches. Can I request that one gentleman go for me and follow the call?
Who are you?
I'm Aaron Boyce at 10209 Berrywood Drive in Oakdale Valley subdivision. And it was Joe and I, it was our understanding that we were going to speak as representatives for the majority of the homeowners in opposition, and so I apologize for cutting in line.
Okay. Go ahead.
So I'm not a paid consultant. I'm very much a layperson, and I apologize for not being quite as polished, but I'm going to try to cover the points as quickly as possible and not take up too much time. First, I'd like to help you understand how overwhelmingly negative the response to this application for rezoning has been, and explain the reaction we received from the applicant, and then finally explain some of why we are opposed. 302 affected residents have protested in writing. Oakdale Valley subdivision has 226 property owners. More than 150 have taken the time and effort to submit a written protest letter or sign a petition in opposition. Dozens of other property owners from surrounding neighborhoods have also written in opposition to this rezoning action. Of the legal petitioners within the 300-foot radius, 25 out of 29 have protested. That amounts to almost 70% of the landmass owners in that radius. The remaining 30% is almost entirely owned by the applicant. As a community, we have tried on many occasions through a variety of channels, including meetings, phone calls, Facebook posts, to reach out to the applicant and dialogue in a meaningful way to help them understand our concerns and encourage them to withdraw or continue their application until an agreement can be made among the many stakeholders in this process. But at each turn, usually flanked by their paid consultants, they have refused to withdraw, and as recently as this Tuesday night, they reiterated their intentions to push through this to its conclusion, even while stating that they wish they had done it differently and could start over. They've acted in a way that makes us feel like they know something about this process that we don't, and that there's an inevitability to the outcome of which we're not aware. Are you familiar with the popular hashtag "sorry-not-sorry"? If you are, that begins to, you might be, begin to understand how we feel about their reaction to these protests. For nearly all of us, our homes are our largest investment in the place where we invest most of our time. Many of us have young children that attend the Oakdale School, and many of us, and several attend worship services at a variety of Oakdale churches. But all of us have a deep love for the serenity of our neighborhood and the beautiful atmosphere that has been built through careful planning and a commitment to all, by all, to develop our community under the same cohesive vision. That vision has, since 1998, been controlled in large part by the Development Regulations of PUD 690 and the accompanying covenant and restrictions. Every property owner in Oakdale Valley has designed their project and developed their land in accordance with the strict and somewhat restrictive guidelines prescribed in these controlling documents. When the applicant purchased their property in 2011, the longstanding regulations of PUD 690 and the vision they dictated were well-known and widely available for every landowner to read and understand. And not surprisingly, one of the specifically allowed uses is a church. Also not surprisingly, there are quite a few regulations that limit and bound the size, the look, and the purpose for which that church should be built. No church building is allowed more than 20,000 square feet, and all buildings are to be of a "scale that would be appropriate to a small village," end quote. It is meant to serve the community that surrounds it and be a part of that community, not sit above on 20 feet of fill and overlook it. It isn't meant to be visible or prominent from the arterial road to the north, Hefner Road, and is to be shielded by a visual screen that rises at least seven feet above the roadway. The applicant's project, as it is proposed, has no relation to the concept of a small village center. Quite the opposite. By way of comparison, the second-largest megachurch in the United States, Life Church, has just built a new facility at Broadway in Britton. The size of their project: 36,000 square feet. The size of buildings allowed in this application: 50,000 square feet. Now, in fairness, the applicant has openly admitted that they never expected their project to fit the vision of PUD 690. In fact, their justification for the need to apply for a new stripped-down PUD has been stated by their pastor to be because, quote, "our project is a different project than the one the current PUD was written for," end quote. And there lies the crux of the problem. Every other property owner in Oakdale Valley has started with the rules and designed their project to fit. This applicant prefers to start with the design and then rewrite the rules around it. Well, wouldn't we all enjoy that? They're no different than the neighbor who buys the lot next door and says, "Those rules weren't written for my house, so they don't apply. I'll just build whatever I want, but don't worry, I'm a really nice guy and a great neighbor, and you're going to love whatever I do." Well, we are worried. We understand and fully support the right of the applicant to develop their property, and almost no one among us has expressed a wish for the church to totally abandon their project. We just want them to use the same rulebook that was already established and follow the same vision for Oakdale Valley that every other property owner, without exception, has followed for almost 20 years. We ask you to recommend denial of this application on the grounds that the size and scope of the project are incompatible with the established scale of the surrounding neighborhood and that the applicant is attempting to use a new PUD to circumvent the rules that already allow for their intended use. Also, please note that the applicant owns almost 10 additional acres east of Valley Forest Avenue, and that once they develop that site as well, residents of Oakdale Valley will essentially be forced to enter and exit their homes by driving down the middle of a 20-acre church campus. For those affected property owners, that sounds like the definition of a megachurch impact. Appreciate your consideration and your attention. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
You want to? I got you.
I refer to this a lot. So I'd like to give you a lay of the land, just so you can understand what we're...
Sir, go ahead, introduce yourself.
Sorry about that. I just realized that. Joe Arches, I live at 6209 Northeast 105th Street, which is on the other side of the lake from where the church is only located.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so from the top of the property down to the lake, there's about...
25 to 30 feet of fall.
So parking lot down at the back of the building, you know, you've got 25 feet or more of slope, which is going to result in a pretty significant fill as you get to the bottom of the property for the building. The building design is to be a level building, so you can have... My estimation is around 20 feet of fill. Down here, toward the back. This area that I identified, like, is an upland forest. It's approximately four acres. It's defined in the comprehensive plan as an environmentally sensitive area, and the comprehensive plan, as a top priority, states that avoidance or minimization, which don't impact, design your building, design your development around avoidance of that upland forest. As a way to address that, what the applicant has done is they've offered up this greenbelt. And my, now, my position on this is, and I want to, I'd like to try to demonstrate to you that, you know, before I came, I looked in the, looked up plan commission and under zoning that says, "Plan commissions should review and recommend approval or denial based on complying with the comprehensive plan." One of the issues brought up in the comprehensive plan is preservation of environmentally sensitive areas, either in avoidance or minimization. The applicant has made no effort at all to avoid that upland forest. In fact, and you can see that building covers the, covers the majority, and you take into consideration the fill, the actual impact to the upland forest is going to extend way beyond the limits of the building, because you've got to make your transition for fill. It's my understanding that they're also going to have large outdoor, open patio areas that are going to extend beyond the limits of the building. So from my estimation, most, or if not all, of that upland forest is going to be destructed based on their current plan. And I'd like to demonstrate that the applicant has several options available to them to avoid, which they have not shown any effort whatsoever to do. And I've actually made suggestions, and if you've read my protest letter, I've put in some examples of things that they can do to avoid. And in talking to the applicant about it, they, they haven't pursued those alternatives and don't care to. But I've, I've made a little, a little cutout of their building, their phase-one building, and I'd like to quickly show you that, how easy it would be for them to avoid, as, you know, as requested by the comprehensive. Okay, so this is their building, phase-one. They need to move it. See, that's right. Against the board. This parking lot, the regulations, parking regulations, see, over the street. They only need 113 spaces. This reflects somewhere between 170 and 180. They can obviously scale that way down, give them room to put, build their phase-two. They may have to impact the upland forest a little bit, but not near the extent that they're basing on that land, based on this plan. So, you know, the comprehensive plan is clear on how to treat upland forest, and they're environmentally sensitive areas that are important to this community. The applicants made no effort to address it. In fact, they didn't even, haven't even put it on their master development plan that they submitted to the city. The other thing I'd like to point out is, because it's going to be built upon a fill, they've got a height restriction, or they're asking for a height restriction of 45 feet. So if you had the fill, you know, they're going to be 60, 65 feet above natural grade. And they also are requesting additional 15 feet for steeple and other uses. They could be up to 80 feet. 60, 65 for the main building, plus another 15 feet for the steeple. That's not compatible in any way, shape, or form with a low-density, single-family neighborhood. I mean, not at all. They're going to take our beautiful wooded property that's on the other side of the lake, they're going to remove all the trees and build a huge structure that's not compatible with our neighborhood, and they intentionally plan to, their design does not comply with the comprehensive plan in any way, shape, or form. So I would just submit and ask you to consider denying their application based on noncompliance with the comprehensive plan and deny the request for rezoning. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, happy to answer them.
Go ahead, Pat. Chairman, I've got a quick question. Did the homeowners association ever give any thought to buying this property?
Well, that's a whole nother story. We, our developer, private turnover, didn't set up any reserves for, this is a private community, and we're responsible for road maintenance. And we set up any reserves, so we're playing catch-up, and we don't have the financial capacity whatsoever to do anything like that.
That's the only way you have ultimately have control over the property is own it.
Right.
So I don't know why that didn't occur at all.
We don't have money. We just did the turnover to the, to our homeowner control board recently, and, you know, everybody bought their properties, they bought their homes, bought their lots, on the expectation of the exist, of the existing zoning, which we knew, we knew that it was, you know, a lot of church. But we were comfortable with two buildings, more than 20,000 square foot per building, and it was a design that was, we felt like was a lot more compatible with our, with our neighborhood. But to have one 50,000-square-foot megachurch at that height level, to all of us, it's just, it's just crazy. In a way, it doesn't blend with our neighborhood, it's not compatible with our neighborhood. And something that was mentioned earlier by the applicant, there has been, the effort to work with us and engage the community, input and involve the community, has been literally nonexistent. They have met with our board, many of those were requested by our board. The meeting that they referred to on Tuesday night was a meeting that we called. We invited the applicant. Our neighbors and the people that live in our community know nothing about this project until we got letters from the city noticing us that property was being, it was proposed to be rezoned. And to say that they engaged the community and worked with us is absolutely not fair. That's why you have so much opposition you have today. If they had done that effectively, I don't believe you'd have 302 people protesting against this development. The whole process has not been fair to us, and our concerns have not been considered. And that's the absolute, that's the absolute truth.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming down and your diagram.
Thank you.
Mr., is it Knapp? Knapp Crep?
Knop.
Knop?
John.
Mike?
We have to leave.
Okay. Give us your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Shannon Wilgus, and my address is 9000 Allison Lane in Oklahoma City. Thank you all so much for listening to all of this. I appreciate that. I, as it was mentioned before, and I don't know if it needs to be mentioned, I'm also not a paid person consultant.
No need to mention that. Paid or unpaid, we listen to everybody.
Didn't know if that mattered, just wanted you to know. I was at the same meeting on Tuesday night. Our children, my oldest is in high school, and we have gone through all of school in the Oakdale Schools, and we were at the same meeting, and I feel sad to hear the other gentleman, because I was at that same meeting, and I thought, I came away, I thought it was a wonderful example of people hearing each other and compromising and listening to each other, and I felt very encouraged by that same meeting. I understand earlier it was brought up that Life Church is a megachurch, and that by comparison, our proposed building would be larger than that. And I just wanted to, you probably know this already, but Life Church is huge because it is in many different campuses in many different cities. To give people maybe a little bit more of a local viewpoint, in Edmund, there is a church called Henderson Hills. It's not far from our community church. But for visualization's sake, I verified this morning, that church is over 200,000 square feet, and they call themselves a regional church. I would refer to that as a megachurch. It's four times bigger than what we're asking for. Our church, the Oakdale Baptist Church, years ago, thought, do we try to grow bigger? Do we try to do things that are really far away? Or do we recognize there are all these other houses of worship in general areas around us and commit to being a community church, welcoming anyone, welcoming everyone, but understanding our scope is right here? And it was our decision years ago to stay a community church so that we could best serve those people right there. We've had a sign on that property since it was purchased. It was an exciting moment. We got to put a sign up on land that we, that had been prayed for for five years, trying to find a piece to stay in our community. We found that, we put a sign on it, and never had any opposition to it until very recently. I wanted to say, in regard to height, I know that it's also hard to visualize height sometimes. I imagine it's easier for you all, because you're, I've watched what you've been doing all day. So, but I did want to point out that our current church, where we are just on the other side of this block to the west, is 51 feet tall. And what we're looking at here, I have this information, the proposed PUD limits the height of the roof to 45 feet, and a steeple or decorative ornamentation to not be 15 feet taller than that. And I just wanted to point out that we're currently at 51 feet, and we've never had an issue with that. To approach, or to explain something that Mr. Gandy shared earlier, he knows that he is going to be looking at this building, and I totally get that, because for eight years, I lived in Oakdale Valley. I was one of the first homes in that neighborhood, and I looked directly out my front door at the existing church. So when I went out to get my paper, there it was. believers, it was never an eyesore, even though it's a really old building. The new building is going to be newer and really a lot more beautiful than what we currently have. But I will say, as a person who lived directly, looking out at it, it was, it was not an issue to look at that. Finally, I just want to say that part of the reason for the growth is because of so much service that we wish to do in our area. When my own children were smaller, I really wanted a mother's day out to be at my local church. And we just simply didn't have the room for it, and that's something that we anticipate and excitingly look forward to having room for things that serve the community. I want to close in just saying that being hurt by a church is a big hurt, and we don't want any wounding. The people who are upset, I understand. I think a lot of it's because they don't understand what is in the future, and we never do. But I just want to say that they are still the very people that we aim to serve through our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Thank you. My name is Steve Boone. My address is 708 Capri Place in Edmund. I am the volunteer administrator for Oakdale Baptist Church. I moved to the community in 1993 into Apple Valley, which is one of the neighborhoods in the Oakdale community. Lived there for 20 years, raised my daughter in Oakdale School. She got baptized in Oakdale Baptist Church. And when Oakdale Valley development came into play, the developer at the time held a spirited neighborhood meeting, we held it at our church with everyone invited, and everyone was worried about Oakdale Valley coming to town, because it, everything out there is acreage and well and septic. Oakdale Valley was going to be the first one, a high-density, a lot of people moving in. There was going to be light pollution, there was going to be noise pollution, the small lots and high-density development, increased traffic, clearing of the land, overloading the school, those were all concerns that everyone had, especially those of us who had one acre lots, and now they're going to these small lots. And then a conversation came up from the early adopters to the area that were at the meeting that had five-acre lots when they first started moving out there. And their comment was, well, wait a minute. When these guys came in at two and a half acres, we were really concerned. When you Apple Valley guys came in at one acre, we were really concerned about how you're going to impact the area and the school. And now you guys are telling us we need to worry about this next development. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, things change over time. Oakdale Valley developed, a lot of people moved in, it improved our community, our school thrived, our church thrived. And I think that as we go into the future and work past this conflict that we're having, our community is again going to grow and thrive, and it'd be improved by a new and better church serving the area. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Ford.
I'm Justin Ford, 3108 Eagle Pass Lane in Edmund, Oklahoma. And I am the pastor at Oakdale Baptist Church. I've been there for 11 years, and I'm speaking in support of our request for PUD to be approved. As pastor of the church, I can tell you that Oakdale Baptist Church has been an important part of the Oakdale community since it was founded in 1920. Over the last 25 years especially, our community and our church have experienced exciting growth to the point where we needed more land if we were going to continue to meet the needs of our community. So in 2011, we purchased land at one entrance of the Oakdale Valley neighborhood, which is just a half mile away from our current property, at another entrance to the Oakdale Valley neighborhood. We fell in love with this property. We fell in love with the beauty of the land. We loved the location. And it was imperative to us to remain in the heart of the Oakdale community, because we are a community church. We could have very easily moved out of the community. We could have purchased land in an area that would have given us the opportunity to become more of a regional church, like what has been described, a mega church. We instead chose to stay where we are and to continue to serve in the community that we have loved and served for 97 years, again, long before any homes were even in this area. In order for us to build what we need to continue this ministry, we applied for this new PUD. When we learned of opposition within the community, we immediately, within hours, set up meetings to hear those concerns and to try to find ways to satisfy them. In fact, we met on nine different occasions between September 21st, 2016, and January the 9th, 2017, which is just this past week. We met with the Oakdale Valley Homeowners Association Board and other representatives and groups that live in the area. We have been able to, over these months, we have been able to come to some agreement on some of the requested changes. We have been able to compromise on others, but we have not been able to satisfy everyone's concerns, and we recognize that. There is obviously a lot of frustration over this situation, which quite honestly breaks our heart as a church. The last thing that we ever wanted was to be a cause for division in this community that we care about. But we are confident that we can work through this process over the coming years and show our neighbors that we intend to add to our community, not take away from it. We believe that there is a small group of people who vehemently oppose our building project. There is obviously a large group of people who, my personal opinion is, is that they have been given a lot of misinformation, a lot of conjecture, which has led to an understandable fear of the future and change that might happen. But we also believe there's an even larger part of our community who understands exactly who we are and what we've meant to the Oakdale community for nearly a century. We've been so encouraged by those who have reached out to us, even just in the past few weeks, to share their support for us and to let us know that they believe in what we're trying to do. One resident who has no affiliation whatsoever with our church emailed me a couple of days ago, and she said this. She said, "I do believe that most neighbors of mine have no issue with this project of the church being built. Yes, there are concerns, but that's true with any change. Please know that we appreciate your efforts in our community." That kind of support, along with our commitment and our love for this community, gives us the confidence that we can move forward with a building project that will allow Oakdale Baptist Church to continue its service to the community for generations to come.
Thank you. Commissioners, that's everybody that signed up.
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I deferred.
Sure. Why not?
I'm short. I'm Mr. Burgess, and I wasn't going to speak today, because the only reason I got involved was because I was watching Oakdale community divide. This is not about taking sides. This is not about anyone being against the church. This is not a small group of people who don't want a church. This is a large group of people who are bucking a consultant, who is asking for a blank check to develop on that piece of property. That is what this is about. And I adore Pastor Ford, and I don't want to say something that controverts what he said, but the only people that reached out and continually kept trying to work this out outside of this arena are the people who've been protesting. We reached out, we kept suggesting things, and we were almost continually told, no. We were told, we want to build what we want to build, and we don't want restrictions. We're not sure exactly how we want to do it. This is, we just want a blank check. We did get them to come down from unlimited height to 45. We did get them to agree to not have an electronic sign. They wanted an electronic sign out front. We did get them to give us a buffer. That's it. Everything else that we've asked for, we're concerned about the drainage. This is a massive project. It is taking up a majority of this piece of property. And how it was set up before, the only reason we want to go backwards is because at least with that, there was a footprint that was restrictive. There were screens that screened the properties from the view of whatever commercial property was going to be on there. There were requirements that made it blend in with the neighborhood so that it wouldn't loom over. I heard you talk earlier about a, about a building that's three feet, three stories tall, and it looming over the residents. I don't know unless you go out there if you can understand, but the top, there is a very steep slope from the north side of this property down to where the lake is. It's like 25 to 35 degrees, or feet, excuse me. They want to flatten the screen, the seven-foot screen, remove all vegetation in front of the church. They've refused to even just put trees along the road like we have along our interval in the existing PUD. They have refused to say that they would protect any trees that are not within that green belt. Refused! We don't want to put it in the PUD, because we want to do what we want to do. If we want to demolish all the trees, we will. The consultant came back after we said, hey, could you, could you preserve three-inch caliper trees? The consultant came back and said, how about five? We said, no, we want three-inch caliper trees. Consultant came back and said, we'll preserve three-inch caliper trees in the green belt, measured from three feet up, contrary to the six inches from the ground that's in your code. And the consultant came back and said, we're going to get rid of all the shrub underbrush, and we're going to get rid of all the evergreens. The only trees we're going to keep are non-evergreens, three inches in caliber, measured three feet up, in this small green belt. The 125-foot green belt, I applaud. We walked it, we looked at it, we said, you know, this is great. The 50-foot one, we looked at, and I think it's adequate. I'm, I'm happy with it. I really think it will provide the screening from the increased noise that's going to be outside and the increased lighting. But the what, the 20 at the bottom? People live right across that pond. They built their houses with windows, and now the church is going to back up right to the edge of the pond, and they're just going to be staring at each other. And they've got huge patios where they're going to have huge crowds gathering outside at the edge of our lake. It's, it's not that we don't want them there, we just want them to blend in and make it feel like they're a part of our neighborhood, because they are asking to come from the edge into the heart of our neighborhood. If you want to be in the heart of our neighborhood, and you want us to drive through your campus just to get to our own entrance, please just work with us and add a little screening along our private drive for which they are going to have access. We aren't asking ridiculous. We know that there are compromises that can be made, and no one's going to be 100% happy. But right now, the church hasn't given anything up that is at all discomforting to them. We have. We've already given a lot. We've already said, you know what, you want a 50,000-square-foot building? We'll come to the city council. We will stand united with you if you will just provide assurances about what you're going to do in the PUD, so that we're not fighting after the upland forest has been completely obliterated, when it's too late. I don't think asking for a few extra provisions in writing so that we know we can hold them accountable is too much to ask. I really don't. And I love all of my neighbors, every single one of them. They go to church. My kids go to the church. And I can't tell you how the misinformation that we're not providing to people is being characterized. I want to take the high road. I don't want to try to say, I don't want to do anything other than say there has to be a way to compromise. But I'm telling you, it has not happened despite what they've said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark, before you start, commissioners, do you have any specific questions right now before Mark comes back up?
I do.
And who are they going to be addressed to?
Pardon?
Mark?
Yeah.
Mark?
Pull up the rendering of the building that you are proposing to have on this property. Where is the additional 15 foot over the 45? That doesn't, that doesn't describe what's in the application.
The existing, okay. Number one, the existing PUD allows for 45 feet of an existing 15-foot steeple. The proposed PUD allows for the exact same thing. There's no difference in height from existing.
PUD 690 allows for 45 feet plus 15?
Yes. Yes, it allows for the same thing. And they said we came to them with a blank slate on height. We said we had to conform to, to R1, which was the same height regulations. We just spelled it out this time.
Say that again? I didn't?
In the, in the original PUD, we didn't specify height. We said, we said per the code, per code.
Per R1?
Yes.
And what's that?
Which is the same 45 feet, I believe. Am I all right? So.
Three, three stories?
It wasn't a blank slate. It was just, wasn't spelled out. So, it hasn't changed.
So you'll limit this to 45 feet?
Say it again?
You'll limit, oh, you have 45 plus 15?
Just for steeple.
Steeple.
Just as code permit.
According to R1, you have three stories.
No.
Well then, okay. J.J.?
There's allowances for steeples. What he's, what he's got is the, mirrored the regulations of the existing PUD that's on the property now. So whatever the height regulations are now is what there will be if this PUD is adopted.
Meaning no change?
No change.
Now what?
No change on height.
45 plus 15.
Which was provided for in the original PUD. So no change. That's what it is now. They could go build that now.
Okay. Now wait, if I had a PUD that said, I'm going to build something, and the height is going to be in accordance with R1 regulations, I can put a 60-foot thing? No. Well then, that's what you're saying.
45 plus 15.
45 building with an extra 15 for steeple.
So wait a minute. So if I wanted to do R1 residential development, I then could have three stories, this is a house, three stories with a 15-foot tower on top of it?
That's only for a church.
Huh?
It's only if you use it as a church.
Is that in R1 regulations?
There are regulations, certain allowances, yes, for churches to have additional height.
I need more clarification about that, because I know what kind of the application you're talking about, per this, per this, per this. So, well, that answers a question. The compliance with upland forest preservation is crucial and cannot be interfered with one bit. So if you intend to do anything with the upland forest, as the TE says, as the comprehensive plan says, this is a no-brainer.
That's what the, that is not what the TE says. The TE says that I agree to maintain the upland forest within the green belt.
Pardon me. That's what I'm saying. You have to comply with the comprehensive plan that we worked on for three years, and that's what it says.
I mean, with all due respect, I can, we can go develop that right now and not save a single tree.
I don't argue. I'm just saying, that's what I expect, you know? And then, and only other thing that I have is that if the original PUD said that this facility is going to be compatible with a, or scaled in connection with a village type of thing, what you're describing is much greater than a village. It's a hu, it's a giant complex. And then, and only other thing that I have is that if the original PUD said that this facility is going to be compatible with a, or scaled in, in connection with a, a village type of thing, what you're describing is much greater than a village. It's a hu, it's a giant complex with lots of buildings and lots of height and everything else. And I'm, I'm, I'm really sympathetic to your client, uh, who's been around for a long, long time. And when you want to grow, you want to grow and do something, but this particular growth that you're talking about, planted in the middle of a community that has been developed and developed and has the people that have lived there for years and years and years based upon what the existing zoning was, and there's like three hundred protests that have been written in opposition to this particular development. And what I've, what I hear is that their concerns, and I've, I've not heard that they don't want you there, haven't heard that one time. Their concerns is, is that you've just kind of said, you know, thank you very much, but we're going to do this. My recommendation right now, rather than, than, you know, not voting in favor of this, would be that you go back to the neighborhood and the neighborhood association, and you have really a series of significantly constructive dialogues between the two of you, and come to a place where, okay, I get it, I can do this. Because you've, you've, you've flip-flopped everything they had an expectation of, and I think the reason why there's so many protests out there are, is because of, uh, and, and not a refusal, but an inability or whatever to really listen to what they want to do and to do something with your project that accommodates that. Not to delete it, I haven't heard that one time. Not to, not to let you not do that, it's to like, pay attention to what we are in this community, because if you are a community church, well then, be that. And so my recommendation is, is that this be continued for a while, and you come back and, and let us know what the, deal with the neighborhood and, and maybe come up with something better and more accommodating to what their concerns are.
Uh, to address that. I personally met with members of their board or other constituents within that three times, and you've heard the pastor say that they met with them a total of nine times already. So it's not like we've, we've went and not, not met with these, not met with the protesters and, and not addressed any of their concerns. That's absolutely not correct.
Mark, I think what I've heard though, from the, from the protesters on that side, is that, uh, they've said something and you said, no, we're not going to do that. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what I hear.
I mean, I can go, we can, we can go through their list of the things that they've mentioned, and then the, the list grows each time. We address something and then we get other things, Bob.
Um, if I could, just, just a minute. Just speaking for the commission and, or myself and my view, um, I recognize that we have less than a full panel, but I, I just cannot support a continuance of this after we've devoted this much time to this meeting, heard ten protests. The applicants have clearly said that they've met. Whether the results of the meeting have been fruitful, I mean, nobody's disputed that there have been meetings. I don't know that we're going to come to grips, to, to a consensus. I mean, my view is, I, I, that's my personal view. Obviously, I'm, I'm, but one vote. Lee, I'll defer, this is, uh, certainly appreciate your guidance on this.
Did I ask?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary.
You mentioned that consultant had come to your meetings. Who is that consultant?
I would assume they're referring to me.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I really struggle with both sides of this issue. While, um, I believe the church is growing, wants to grow, um, they've been a good citizen and, in this community, and really has, um, really, really has done a great job in terms of, of what they've provided in terms of services, outreach to this community. And yet, today seems that we're at a place where I would hate to, to think that a church would, would have this many protests for a community that, that they have served and looked to serve in the future. And yet, I want to see the kingdom advance, obviously, and yet I hear this, any number of, of protest letters and phone calls, and I've been on the phone, uh, I thought my church could, you know, keep me tied up, but certainly there's been this outpouring and passion in this community. And like Commissioner Bright had mentioned earlier, I've not heard one person say to me that they don't want the church there. I, I also believe that there just has to be a place at which, and I understand concessions have already been made, um, and I was under the impression maybe that, that there had not been nine meetings up to this point, uh, because it was just kind of hard to think that we had gotten to this place. I, I, like, um, other commissions have already expressed the desire for continuance. I mean, I, I really, I really don't think that I could vote for this today, given all that we've heard, the concerns, that if, if there was a way to put in screening or something that could get us to where we needed to be. You've already widened, uh, my understanding is, um, the green belt, you've already voluntarily did that. One gentleman mentioned move in the building, you know, I think that pushes it, given the topography of the land, I think it pushes it even, um, further down so that you now have to do even more feel for that particular, uh, spot. And so I think some, some compromises are unreasonable for you guys, Mark, but then there could be some other areas where there might be some give and take that, that could happen. And so that's really my comments. I know we spent a lot of time, uh, on comments and a lot of time on this particular issue today, but I just feel like it would benefit the applicant to try to meet some area of, of additional compromise that would satisfy, you know, the, uh, community. It's just unfortunate, and what people fail to realize is that when you purchase a property and you're looking out over a lake, or you're looking over a field, or you've got dandelions in the backyard, or whatever the case may be, African violets, whatever, that, that, that land is subject to change. And what, um, Commissioner Pat mentioned earlier is, the only way you keep that from happening is that you purchase it so that you have control over it. So often, issues come before us where there's just resistance to change, but this is going, this property is going to change. And what I like that the applicants have already done is limited the usage of what this property is, and the uses that could be used here have limited that. And so I just think that there's a, a place where, um, the church has made a lot of concessions and many concessions, and the community needs to see some of the concessions that have been made, and maybe that happens through a continuation of dialogue and leaving from here and saying, both of you have to make compromise and come to that place.
Just to be clear, um, one thing on the uses, um, that I clarified at the first that I want to be sure that we appreciate. The uses that the church originally suggested were limited to three. The uses entered, the existing PUD, six ninety, are significant, which is, was in response to the requests of the neighbors. So instead of having three uses as the church, the PUD now has, it looks like, twenty-six separate us, uses exclusive of subparts. So the uses, again, just to be clearly, I just want to be sure that we, we appreciate that, have broadened back to the original PUD. Okay? That's just a point of clarification, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Uh, okay. I don't think we need to Terry.
Can I go ahead and, can I go ahead and?
What do you want to do?
Well, I want to go ahead and?
Wait, 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 hold on a second. Are you going to agree to a continuance or not? Because if you are, I want to cut this off and move on to other people who've sat through the balance, who've sat through this so far, because we have, we have to get a number of people here, so.
I truly respect your request for the continu, your request for the continuance, and I've done this long enough and know that we've been through this process long enough, and I almost always agree to your request for continuance, but in this, in this instance, I do not think it's going to, um, change anything. So I'm not going to agree to the request for continuance. So can I go ahead and just address these last few things and then we can?
Make it. If you would make it, I'd appreciate that. Well, he's got, I think we ought to give him a right to speak to what the protest, the protester suggested, so please.
Really quickly, the, the, the existing PUD has the village concept, which allows for a lot more square footage than just forty, right? That's just what the church is allowed to do with, that use within the existing PUD. It can be spread out amongst that entire property. There is nothing in the existing PUD except for the buffer along Hefner that limits any use on that property, including the upland forest. The upland forest is a, is, is something that the comprehensive plan suggests in the case of a rezoning, so.
And when you come in with a new PUD, you get into the comprehensive plan restrictions.
Understand. And said, I can go get a building permit today.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying, I'm just making the point.
Hold it. Excuse me. Folks, you had your oppo, everybody's had their opportunity to sign up to speak. Let's let Mr. Grubbs please address the commission. Thank you.
Uh, currently, the building cannot face north or access Hefner, so the visual that he showed you of moving the building down can't happen currently under the existing PUD because it can't face north. Um, the, um, they keep referring to a mega church. It's four hundred and fifty people. That's not a, that doesn't constitute a mega church, and, um, they, uh, we've already addressed the height, and, um, we are, we are adding the green belts, which we already discussed, so that's all I had to say. Uh, we've already, you know, agreed to the height restrictions on the, the same as the existing PUD, so.
Are we, um, I have just a couple quick questions.
Okay.
You're in agreement with the TEs?
Yes, I am in agreement with the TEs.
And would you be willing to limit the number of uses in the PUD to the three that you originally requested?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I have to say, I, I, there's no greater advocate of meeting with neighborhoods and working things out than I am, but it's very clear to me that this has been done to death, and I'm going to move for approval, agree with, uh, the TEs, with agreement to the TEs, and limiting the uses to the three originally cited, which are, let me just check real quick.
I got them right here, Janice.
Three?
Use three, four, and ten?
And ten.
Which is low-impact institutional community recreation eating establishments.
I have to say also, I so very much appreciate all the time and energy that you all have put into this, and I do want you to feel like you've been heard. I think you have been. I think you've been heard both by the applicant and by the commission, but I do think also that this is just a situation, and we encounter this a lot, I realize it feels very different from where you're sitting, maybe the only time you ever encounter it, but the use of land, if it's not developed at the time that it's rezoned, it changes over time. As Commissioner Ryan pointed out, if you don't own it, you can't control it, and over time, the kind of uses that are allowed under the existing PUD are so much more intense than our view, and by that I mean both the commission and the city, of, of the impact of a church. Uh, you can build a church in, you know, any zoning category that we have, including R1. So, um, I've said my say, I move approval with those conditions.
Motion, and a second to approve item nine, restricting the uses as stated, and the rest of the TEs are a stated castor votes. It does not pass. Uh, then that motion?
If there's another motion?
Is there another motion?
If not, it would be automatically continued.
All right. No, no further motion? So it will be automatically continued? Till when? Next meeting? Two weeks? Thanks. No? Yes?
Can you measure height of the building? Where are you measuring from? I mean, if a building on top of a twenty-five-foot hill?
It's from the ground.
From grade.
Grade. From grade. From, from grade. That help you?
The upland forest? Upland forest? Okay, I, I couldn't.
Could exit, please, quickly and quietly? We have other people who'd like to come up. Thank you. Uh, item number ten, JJ?
Item ten was deferred. Item eleven, a C sixty-eight, sixty-three preliminary plant of gentry crossing located southwest corner of Hundred and Fourth and Rockwell.
I think that John, John wanted this continued, the?
Made me sit two and a half hours?
I'm not, I?
John didn't talk to me, and staff recommends, I mean?
You'd like to hear it? I'm, I'm?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not going to make you come back.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is the one that John Yocel wants to continue.
Chairman Yocel wanted to participate?
And he should, because the variance didn't go past.
In the discussion about this?
You're not going to vote for it?
No.
I don't think you can get six for your variance, pardon Commissioner Bright.
That's ridiculous, to make me sit two and a half hours for that. Um, you know, we have been communicating with the staff, and, uh, we did have to revise this layout, do an enabled pipeline, so we've done a lot of work on this. Our variance actually needs to be, our variance to the TE has to be clarified. It's not exactly spelled out what we're asking for.
What is the variance, Jim? If you could clarify that. Let's go ahead.
Is there any protester signed up?
No. Let's hear it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm?
I tried to get it continued at the beginning.
Well, it's just a little frustrating that somebody's dictating something long distance when we're here, and we've been continuously working with the staff on this application since, since we submitted it, because shortly after we submitted it, we, uh, received a survey from the, the property owner that indicated a, a pipeline that runs diagonally through the property that we were unaware of. And so our, our preliminary plant went through a redesign, worked very closely with the staff, met with the staff, met with enabled midstream who owns the pipelines, they're in support of the redesign of the sta, of the plant, which is what you have in front of you. During the zoning process, when we got this zone, we limited it to a hundred and thirty-five lots. We're at a hundred and twenty-six lots. We conform with the, uh, requirement to have one-acre lots on our west side. I have met several times and spoke to several times the property owners on the west, as well as some of the property owners on the south that have continued to, uh, remain in contact with us about this, is curious about the process. That's why I asked if anybody was here.
Nobody's here.
And, um, And, so, with regard to the staff's comments, the clarification on the TE, which is asking for a variance, is that during the PUD process, we agreed to put the sidewalks along the section lines, but we requested the interior sidewalks be converted to allow for interior pathways, which we have a lot of common areas due to the creek, the floodplain, and now this pipeline. And we're going to utilize those to create an interior pedestrian circulation. And that, our intent is to submit that at final plat. The PUD was approved with that language in there, but as I understand, talking to the staff, that still requires a variance. That's why we have the variance. It's not anything different than what we asked for and you approved. That was in the PUD document that we provide. Are you thinking differently, JJ?
Yeah, the variance is just to be consistent with the PUD.
I don't know, because...
The plan in, originally, in the PUD.
The PUD states that sidewalks won't be required on the interior streets, but the PUD really can't vary the subdivision regulations, so you're, we need a variance to the sub-rég just to be consistent with the PUD.
With the PUD.
The only thing that I have is that Commissioner Yocel wanted a continuance of this application, and he's too sick to type, to tell me what his reasons are, so I don't know.
That's really sad.
So, on behalf of our chairman, I'm going to follow his direction that he texted me prior to the meeting.
It's up to you, Tim.
Well, I mean, with only six people here, it makes it very difficult to, you know, determine whether we can move on or not. It's a shame to delay the developers, because I think we conform to everything. We meet everything that the city council approved in the PUD. We don't have any protestors. As you recall, there was many meetings, so...
I'm in favor of so. I mean, look, that's my personal opinion, so I'd move it along, but I know that you can get to six for your variance.
Right. For the sake of our ill Mr. Chairman, I'll agree to a two-week continuance.
Motion, commissioners?
I'll move for two-week continuance.
Second.
Motion, second to continue item 11 for two weeks. Tim, apologize for the delay. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 12, PUD 1635, application by Flicker Ridge LLC to rezone 1161 Royal Coach Drive.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll. I'm here with the applicant, and we've got an application from you to downzone approximately seven acres on the north side of Surry Hills Boulevard. Downzone from its primary zoning of R4 and C3 to a PUD with R3 base zoning. If you recall, last month, we had an application before you to rezonate to straight R3, and at Plan Commission's request, we deferred this item in order to submit a PUD showing exactly what we planned to do, and we've done just as you've requested, and before you today is that PUD. This PUD has an R3 base zoning. It does contain architectural standards requiring at least 70% brick, rock, or stone. There'll be no signs in this PUD. We've included some exhibits showing the layout of the subdivision, as well as elevations of the buildings that we plan to build. And since the middle, we've come up with a few variations in architectural renderings of those, and I can pass those out.
While you're doing that, can I ask you, why are we going with R3 as a base? As opposed to R2, what I'm looking at, it looks like a duplex to me.
So, originally, we wanted to, we needed to put in one triplex, and we've since gone away from that. If it would clean it up, we could take the three, I think the three, the three house residential out of the uses, and we'd be willing to concede to that.
So, wait a minute, I'm just, so I'm clear. So, you're going to make your base zoning R2?
Well, I was planning to leave the base zoning as R3 and just reduce the uses.
Why?
I think that we can meet all the code in R2. Let me look at one thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
With the buildings that they're planning on building, we can meet the R2, so we'd be agreeable with dropping that down to R2 base zoning.
Okay.
Are you in agreement with the TE? Did you say that already?
I didn't say it, but yes, we are in agreement with the TEs, including the sidewalk. Yes, ma'am.
I have to say honestly that I hate to see this property zoned as anything but R1. I think that would be the most appropriate use of the property, but, you know, at the same time, I'm trying to be realistic about the fact that it's currently zoned in this hodgepodge that includes R4 and C3, so.
Straight C3.
He's reducing it to R2, right?
Yeah, they're reducing it to R2.
So duplexes.
Yeah, that's all we're proposing, is two-family. We do have, like I said, the architectural standards, which right now, I mean, you've got apartments and fast food with no architectural standards, so it is a downzoning. We'll agree to doing the, the R2 as the base zoning on that. Also, I'd like to point out, there is existing duplexes in the neighborhood. In fact, there's a handful across the street in the R4 that's across the street, so it's not completely unheard of that it is in the neighborhood, and we think that this would make a good fit, and we'll want to keep with, you know, an upper-scale unit and try to blend in with the neighborhood.
There are duplexes in the neighborhood, and the difference between the ones that are well-built and those that are not, you know, is significant, and that was one of the reasons why I was asking for elevations. These all appear to me to be brick facade. Are you committing to that?
Yes, in the PUD, we've got the 70% brick, rock, or stone.
You know, I just don't know how much further we can push that, so.
I would say, just to be clear, this is clear for me, you can't develop residential on commercial. And so, there's, if you look where the C3 is on our map...
Right.
You have that piece, and then there's, as JJ just pointed out to me additionally, there's a little strip of the AA that comes in there. So, that's really the reason why...
Maybe I could better see the C3, since it's the small, it's, I think, .72 acres, so it's a small portion of the site.
Right. And then, believe me, I don't, nobody understands, and I went to the meeting with the other night, I don't think anybody's clear as to why there was ever that C3 there unless there was proposed some sort of commercial use in association with the golf course, but one of the residents mentioned that they may have considered continuing that road out to Hefner. It was, it's really an anomaly, so I think at any rate, regardless of the balance of the next application, this is a more favorable outcome for the neighborhood than what currently exists, because they could certainly be faced with a far more intense use. That's, you could put a lot of apartments on that lot. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Move adoption of the application.
Well, we have, just a second. I don't know, do you guys want to speak on the rezoning, or do you want to speak on the, you've signed up for 12, so you want to speak on the rezoning? Just to be clear. Pardon me?
This is 12.
This is 12.
I'd like to speak on 12.
Okay. Great, come on up. I got your note late last night, Mr. Swanson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Greg Swanson. I live at 11728 Surry Hills Boulevard. I have to admit, I have a vested interest in this protest, because what they're, this developer, this outside developer, is asking to do is to dump 50 1,200-square-foot rentals in a, basically, an R1 residential community, and I happen to live right across the street, and that'll be in my front yard. What you're, there was a mention that there was a couple of duplexes. If you look at that map on, that's Surry Hills Boulevard, the main street, right up there in the corner, I guess somebody's got a pointer, there's the last three, two or three, no...
Right, it's right below the, just right below your cursor, right?
Below the cursor. Okay, now move to the right. Little more, little more. Okay, right in there. Okay, that's the only duplexes in this whole area. If you go all the way north on Royal Coach Boulevard, and you go over here to the right, which is 30 tracks of Surry Gate, none of that, that cul-de-sac, none of that is, is duplexes. The entire street that's right there on Surry Hills Boulevard, that's where I live, all of those are single-family residence houses, ranging from $200,000 to probably $275,000 to $300,000. So, this developer is asking to dump in 50 1,200-square-foot rentals in a predominantly R1 area. Just real quickly, I know you've received some protests, a lot of protests on different issues, intensity of use. I think some of the protests have mentioned that this elementary school that's right in this area has had a written master plan report that says that they can handle five more students, and then they are beyond capacity. And now you're saying, well, we'll just dump 50 families in there that go to that same school. You've had other protests based on traffic. You've had other protests based on the fact that it's been developed, that entire area is developed as a single-family residences. On the left-hand side, where it says AA, that's agriculture. Everybody wants to say we're downzoning. You're actually upzoning a portion of this from AA. On the left-hand side, I don't know how many of you folks have been out there and actually looked at this site, but on the left-hand side, where it says AA, that's Surry Hills Golf Course. So, we have the golf course on one side. On the north, we have all single-family residents. On the east, we have all single-family residents. On the south, all single-family residents. All the way around, on Hackney Boulevard, all single-family residents, and substantial residences and nice residences. I'd like to just look at real quickly, and it sounds like kind of the PUD docket here today. So, I went to the city ordinances, and I have the PUD requirements and factors that you're supposed to consider, and I'll be real quickly, I'm not going to read all of the city ordinance, but I want to point out a couple of things, if I could. Under the purpose and intent, it says under 14100.1, there's five factors there. If you were to ask the developer, or ask yourselves, what can we say about those five factors? I think three out of the factors, for sure, you can answer with no. The first one on A, it says, "To encourage the innovative land development while maintaining appropriate limitations on the character and intensity of use, assuring compatibility with adjoining and proximate properties." 50 1,200-square-foot rentals is not the same intensity of use. It's not compatible with adjoining property owners. So, paragraph D says, "The reason you would approve a PUD is if it provides a development framework that will create, strengthen, or enhance a strong sense of neighborhood and community character." The community character is single-family residences. The entire thing is, except for the two on the end that we pointed out. So, paragraph E says, "The reason you would approve a PUD is that you would encourage innovative development and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community." You're going to have 50 families of vehicles coming out onto Surry Hills Boulevard. They do have some of the duplexes on the outside facing Royal Coach and Surry Hills Boulevard. If you've ever been out there and looked at it, down in the lower left-hand corner of this map, Surry Hills Boulevard ends right there. It does not go all the way through. You turn left, and you go on Hackney all the way around. So, this basically is a dead end, and you're dumping 50 families of traffic in this little dead end. E says, I'm sorry, that's all on what is called purpose and intent. You go to 14100.2, and it's the goals and objectives of the PUD. I'm telling you things that you already know. You've had many, many PUDs in front of you. I'm just trying to give you kind of a little closing argument here. A says, "One reason to approve it is if it minimizes adverse effects upon surrounding property." This doesn't minimize adverse effects. This maximizes adverse effects. Talks about traffic conditions, parking, and other matters affecting the public safety and general welfare. Again, the whole thing about traffic, students, the school, and all that. B says, "Another factor you're to consider is, does it contribute to the revitalization or redevelopment of the areas where a decline of any type has occurred?" There is no decline in this area. My house was built in 2002. The house next to me was built in 2016. The house next to him was built in, it'd be about three years ago, possibly four. That house on the end is about a $275,000 to $300,000 house that was built three years ago. That is not a decline of an area that we need to clean up. So, paragraph C says, "It's to promote," another reason why you might approve it, "is to promote infield development that is compatible and harmonious with adjacent uses, both existing and planned." I submit to you the same thing. 50 units of rentals in a dead end is not compatible and harmonious. The last thing, real quickly, I don't want to abuse the time, although it sounds like it has been. The last thing is that you're supposed to consider is, "Does it contribute more to the general prosperity, health, safety, and welfare of the community more than would otherwise be provided through standard development?" That's what you're supposed to consider on a PUD. Again, I don't mean to insult your intelligence. I'm sure you've considered all these factors before, but I'm trying to point out, it's not compatible. The last thing I want to mention is, there is an amendment that was filed yesterday, and I have a copy of this. Who I give this to? What that is, is an amendment to the restrictive covenants for Surry Hills Edition Number Eight. And that amendment says that in certain blocks, that you cannot have rental property. This area is block number 75. This is in the area where you cannot have rental property. If they want to build duplexes and sell duplexes, that's a different story, but you can't, according to the amendment to the restrictions, you cannot build in block 75. No, I said that wrong, not 75, 67. I was totally wrong. 67 is the block, and if you notice in there, it says, in blocks, in several of the blocks, you cannot have rental operations, you cannot have rental properties, and that's in block 67. This was adopted and passed and signed by over 60% of all the landowners in this Surry Hills Edition Number Eight. And pursuant to the Oklahoma statute that's cited right there, to get that approved, we had to have 60% of the property owners sign it, and we've calculated that we have more than 60%, and it was filed with the county clerk, and they approved and filed it. So, regardless of what you do on this PUD, they're going to have a problem, because they're going to be in violation of restrictive covenants. Thank you for your time. It's not about the color of the duplex. It's not about the brick on the front. It's about 50 1,200-square-foot rentals in a R1 residential area of nice houses of the whole community. We have people in Surry Hills who are second generation, I suppose we might even have third generation by now, but we have second-generation people where they grew up there, they live there. It's a nice community, kind of out on the western edge of town, and their kids come back and live there. And I just don't think that you can justify this application, and I think if you make findings, and if your duty is to make findings, I think you could make findings, that all of the things that I've mentioned, the developer has not sustained its burden to show you that this application should be approved. I thank you for your time.
Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Swanson?
I do have a question. What block is this?
67.
What's the, the application?
The application is 67.
Block 67.
67. Okay, now I have a legal question. Can this amendment supersede the current zoning of block 67?
The, the PUD request?
No, no, this amendment, the amendment.
The covenants have nothing to do with zoning.
Doesn't have anything to do with zoning, sir, I don't believe.
What's the legal effect of this amendment on this application?
Has no effect whatsoever.
That's what I thought.
I agree with it, has no effect. What it has effect is a restrictive, it's a valid restrictive covenant, that you can't build rentals there. So I'll leave that to your counsel to discuss.
It's not for us to sort out.
It doesn't deserve whether property's for sale or for rent.
That's not our business.
No. Yeah, again, we're considering a zoning request. That's it. Thank you, sir.
I, I agree with that. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Swan, Mary Lee Swanson.
My, my name is Mary Lee Swanson. I live at 11728 Surry Hills Boulevard. What I would like to say, and what concerns me the most about when I have spoken with the, with the developer of this property, is that I don't think that he, that he has listened when we have tried to talk to him about what might be appropriate for this property, and I don't think he has indicated that he has not had, that he has not developed any other property. And I, when I look at what he has given us so far, I feel like he hasn't put a lot of thought and consideration into what he is going to build, and I would like to see something more substantial about what he is going to do with the property. And he has also indicated that he wants to rezone this to R3 because otherwise he'd have to put a wall around whatever he built, some type of a nice, like our Surry Gate that we have in Surry Hills has a really nice wall around it, it is gated, the, the structures are attractive and fit the area, and I would have no objection to something like that being built on that area. I think that would be wonderful, and we would welcome it. It's not that we don't want something built on the area, it's not that we don't want something there, but we want to see someone who has some, at least shows us that he has a vision of what should be appropriate for the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Mr. Coleman, did anything, thank you, sir. David Henry, would you like to speak to us? Thank you.
Concerning one issue Mr. Brummett just spoke of, and hello, Dan. The, you would be passing a, allowing a zoning restriction, zoning variance being approved, knowing that it is against a covenant. There is a restrictive covenant now out there telling them what they can and cannot do. So you would be, if you approved this, you would be actually telling them that that's okay then to go ahead and build, and we certainly don't think so. Obviously, there was over, as Mr. Swanson told you, there was about 75% of, of people there in block eight that had to sign this document, so even though there's not a lot of people here protesting, there's, there's a 75% ownership in that block telling all of you that we do not approve these rental duplexes. And at our meetings, and Mr. Hensley was there, we appreciate him coming to the meeting, that is the concern. We don't care about duplexes, there are some nice duplexes being built, Mr. Salazar's building some nice duplexes, it's the rental issue that's the problem. And what this has created is a, is a compound of rental units which do not exist in Surry Hills. Surry Hills is approximately, if I had to guess, two by, two mile by two mile area, and this area just really concerns block eight, but in the whole community of Surry Hills, there is no rental condos, duplex compound that this has created. And Mrs. Powers is right, it's predominantly R1 and residential community, and that's what the people would like to keep, to have, and that's, I live near there too, and that's certainly a concern. When you have duplex rentals, and the 50 units that he has on this design, if you notice, all of their duplexes access the streets. You come onto the street on Surry Hills Boulevard, you come onto the street on Royal Coach, and by that design, what they're doing then, as we know, people park on the streets. If you live there in that duplex, you're going to park on that street, you're going to be parking on Surry, Surry Hills Boulevard, you're going to be parking on Royal Coach. And if you notice that far corner, Royal Coach there next to Footman's on the corner, that's a real sharp turn. That is a dangerous, dangerous spot in that area, and I can testify to that because that's where I walk my dog. I know that area, and that little corner right there, even though it doesn't look that sharp, it is a very sharp little corner. Now, by, by allowing this, you would be having residences, their duplexes will be entering onto Royal Coach Boulevard with their driveways, with their, their parked cars on that city street, and that, that alone, right there, that one quarter will, will create a dangerous situation. There, there had been some discussion, and if they had, and you, you've heard of Surry Gates we talked about, which is a wonderful, a gated community, we were hoping that's what this development was, but they have no concern, and they do not want to make these into anything other than rentals. If they took their units and inverted them and made a drive-in in the middle, and all of their, the back doors were all to the street, and there was no access to the streets, that it would certainly be a safer environment and a safer area, but they've chosen not to do that. So I don't think that their PUD is compatible with this, with the covenants of block eight. I don't think their, their PUD is acceptable in the best use of the community, and the, the best use of that land in that community, and I think that for that purpose, that, that, their application should be denied.
I have to just say, Commissioner Powers is, any questions for Mr. Henry? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powers has to leave very soon, so Mr. Corrigan, so does Gary. So do you have anything new to add? Because it better be good, because we're, we're running out of folks. All right. Craig Corrigan, tell us your address.
121, row zero, Royal Coach Drive. I brought pictures for each of you, two pictures. One shows, it's the same thing I addressed with you last time, one shows the row of single-family dwellings along Surry Hills Boulevard. The other shows all the townhomes built by Salazar in Del Norte. So I have enough for each one of you to have that. My objection is the destruction of a single-family dwelling neighborhood. To my knowledge, Del Norte has sold one unit, okay, and that's it. So as you look at use and what's involved, I think you need to keep in mind, we're going to dump a lot more people onto 122nd, onto Royal Coach from Del Norte, then if you add that, we have single-family homes sandwiched in there. I don't think it's an appropriate use, I echo what everyone else has said, but I wanted you to have that visual, so you can see the problem that we're starting on. I think Del Norte started it, and if you allow this, it will continue. Before long, our neighborhood will be gone. So thank you, and if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Commissioners, the application in front of us is the zoning application. So you've heard the protesters with respect to that. Maybe, Jason, do you have anything to add on the zoning?
Yeah, if I could respond real quick to a few of the comments, I'll make this brief. So there's comment on the upzoning of the agricultural R1, that equates to approximately .25 acres, a quarter of an acre. The rest of the 6.5 acres is a downzoning from R4 and C3. A lot of comments on infrastructure. Staff report indicates that infrastructure's available and adequate to serve this. Traffic indicated that, that the streets are adequate to serve this type of development. As far as the PUD goes, the comprehensive plan discusses supporting diversity and integration of housing unit types in all land use topology areas in order to meet the diverse needs of households. So we think that's in line with, with, with what we're proposing here. The PUD does include considerations, it has consideration for setting architectural standards and those kind of things to protect the community around it. Also, on access to the street, we're asking for nothing different than what the people across the street have, and us to be able to provide access onto that street for, you know, those duplexes and single-family, we're asking for the same on that. And then to speak lastly on the covenants, it's obvious that their main concern is the rental units, covenants is a separate issue, and, so, covenants is a separate issue, and we will, our, the applicant has provided those documents to his legal counsel, and we don't believe that has any bearing on the case in hand. And for that reason, we'd ask for your approval.
Bob?
This, the, it, for clarifying my question, it is rezoning, period.
This, this application, item 12 is rezoning
And what, and, and this is what's
From R4, C3 to R2.
This is what's significant about this application, is that this is zone, the whole thing, R4 and C3. Now, there's a sliver that's AA, that's on the, whatever that side is, the south side, you know, there's a sliver, but you eliminate that sliver, and, and without regard to the amendment to the, you know, that you filed, a giant apartment complex and a grocery store or, you know, whatever you want on C3 could be built there, somebody had an idea back in the day. And so on a rezoning, when I, when I see that this whole thing is R4 and C3, and the applicant has agreed to come in with R2 duplexes, and at least the renderings of them, they don't look real bad, and then the applicant then has to deal with something that we can't deal with, that's that amendment. They've got to deal with that, you know, so if no rentals are there, well then, you know, guess what? They're going to have to sell them, or not build them. So I don't think that there's any question that, that downzoning, even though there's an upzoning on that sliver, is anything other than beneficial to the long-term use of this particular plot, and I would move approval of the application with, with the amendment to R2.
No, I think we need to vote. No offense, sorry, sir.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, wait, this is just the zoning application, which we can.
Does that mean follow up?
The PUD is the next item on the agenda.
The plat.
The plat, excuse me, the plat. Okay, motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. That, sorry, that's five, five, so that item is approved, that's a majority, okay?
People voted for that one.
No?
No.
I'm yokel, I'm voting in, in the chair position, which is yokel. So that's, effectively what you have is Hensley, Rankin, Bright, Cooper, and Ryan voted in the affirmative, okay? If you're keeping score. All right.
Item 13 is C6862, the associated preliminary plat of Surry Villas.
Jason Spencer, again, here representing the applicant, and I'll be brief. So we've got the preliminary plat, 25 duplex lots, total of 50 units, we've got a centrally-located common area, we plan to put in some landscaping, park benches, and trees. It meets the, the zoning, and we would ask for your approval.
Agree with the T's?
We do agree with the T's.
On the sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Move approval.
Okay, motion and a second to approve item, oh, nobody signed up for item 13, by the way. So, motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes. That item's approved.
Item 14 is PC 10487, application by Sean Evans to rezone 737 Southeast 89th Street.
Hey, good afternoon, Sean Evans, and I serve as pastor at Frontline Church, South OKC, and I realize maybe in the last few minutes that I'm swimming out of my depth with trying to, to explain this to you, so appreciate your patience. We're a growing congregation on the south side of Oklahoma City. We, we started five years ago, meeting at southeast 44th and I-35.
Just, I, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, that's okay.
But our staff report seems to be in favor of your application. If you'd like to speak to us, you can, but I, I think you're probably going to be in pretty good shape on this, if you'd like for us just to move ahead. Could I get a motion, Commissioners?
I also move this application.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Thank you. Cast your votes. Sir, you're approved.
Thank you so much.
That was one of the best messages you'll ever deliver. Hundred percent acceptance.
It was worth the wait, it was worth the wait.
If you'd passed an offering plate, just think of what would have happened. So. I believe the rest of our items have been continued, is that right, JJ? Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. Ma'am, any, you're good?
Um, can you tell me, uh, the purple stain on South East?
Come on up. I'm sorry, do you know what item that was?
I don't, because I just found out about it three days ago. I'm actually in the phone.
Now, we have some continuances, so.
Okay, if that's continued, I would like to know when.
We'd be happy to tell you if we could figure out which item it was.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I don't see one. Maybe it's.
It's between Mustang Road and Sarah Road, it's right there where the turnpike's changing, between Reno and 15th.
Like between 152?
It's way up from 152.
17 maybe, the closest, huh?
I was, we were under the understanding it was going to be on the agenda today.
Which one?
I think it's deferred to a different date.
I think that's been.
I remember that was deferred to a different date, we'll, we'll figure that out after the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, ma'am. If you'll hold for just a second, the staff will give you some clues. Next on the agenda then, communications and reports, planning commission members, commission committees, planning department, development services, municipal councils. There are no citizens to be heard, no other business, move adjournment. Thank you.